All rise. Here ye, here ye, the Hammond County Commission meeting is now in session. The Honorable Bobby Hahn presiding. Please remain standing.
Thank you very much. We welcome you to the December 19th, 2024 meeting of the Hammond County Commission. We welcome each of you here. And we will start out by asking that Debbie Ahern lead us in prayer.
First of all, I'm going to read from Luke, Chapter 2, Verse 11. "Today in the city of David a Savior has been born to you. He is the Messiah, the Lord." Let us pray, please. Dear heavenly Father, I'm so thankful, Jesus, that you came, you were born, you died for our sins, and you rose again. Jesus, we're so thankful for this season. And Jesus, I pray that you'll help us to just reach out to one another and to love one another. Or we just thank you so much. In your sweet name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Commissioner Kyle Walker, lead us in the pledge.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam Clark, when you call the row. Mr. Reed.
Thirteen present.
We have thirteen present. We have a quorum. We will begin. Ask it, everybody. Silence your phones. If done that, check that one off the list. I want to let you know that local rules for speaking are posted in the back of the room. Otherwise, we use Robert Rules of Order, which are also posted. Mr. Walker, will you get our list, please? While Mr. Walker is doing that, I do want to make one announcement I think everybody'd be glad to hear. Commissioner Rodney Long is home after his surgery. He's up, out and about. Seems to be, I said out, out of bed. And seems to be pushing himself and doing well, so I know he and his family will covet your prayers, you know, going forward with that. We don't have anyone on the list, so we'll move down in our public comments section. Anyone that wishes to speak on a non-agenda item, when they come forward at this time, you'll have three minutes.
My name is Lyndon Oe, 2343 Joe Stevens Road. As I have done before, I'd like to talk about rules and organizing your rules so that you and the public know what the rules are with sections or an index. For example, having road department where people, and certainly commissioners, and even road commissioners, will know what the private act is and what it covers, as well as perhaps having a list of the roads in Hamlin County, a map, things that people often ask about, and they have no idea where to find it. Having a section on animal control. Having a section on the county attorney. So he and everybody understands the private act for the county attorney. Having a section on the library, on the sheriff's department with contact information, on the mayor, on county commission. Yes, these are spread out through the website, but I'm talking about putting things together in one place and having more complete information than just a name. So I would really encourage you to do that. Go on. It will help you. It will help the public. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items?
Excellent.
Justine Jones, 3436 Old Kentucky Road. "I want to address an issue concerning the Hamlin County Road Commission and the Hamlin County Highway Private Act, which states that road commissioners must attend meetings to receive payment. Former commission chairman and current mayor Chris Cutshaw put us succinctly when he said, 'We all know that you don't get paid if you're not there.' Yet for years, road commissioners were paid through the Hamlin County Payroll Department for all road commission meetings, regardless of whether they attended or if the meetings even occurred. In a nutshell, when wrongful payments to road commissioners were brought to light by Gwen Holden and others, the Hamlin County Finance Department and former road commissioner Danny Bell reviewed attendance and payment records. Based on their findings, the Finance Department sent invoices to road commissioners requiring them to reimburse the county for payments they received from meetings they did not attend. However, there's a significant issue. The invoices excluded four meetings in 2020 that were concealed, yet road commissioners were still paid for them. These canceled meetings alone cost taxpayers approximately $4,500. And it doesn't stop there. Now taxpayers are footing the bill for the county attorney to defend road commissioners and help them keep money they never should have received. The private act is clear. Commissioners are paid for attending meetings, not for meetings that are canceled. I firmly believe Hamlin County citizens should not bear the cost of representing road commissioners who are unwilling to return money they were never entitled to. If these road commissioners want legal representation, they should hire their own attorney. This is a clear conflict of interest. The county attorney's role is to uphold the law, enforce the private act, and act in public's best interest by recovering all funds wrongfully paid to the road commissioners for meetings they did not attend." Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good job.
Anyone else have something on non-agenda items? You have three minutes.
My name is Gwen Holden. I live at 8150 West Point Drive. I don't like suing, but when you all don't do the right thing, I'm going to sue. Because that's my money too. And it's your money too. And you, I would think that you would want to get it back. And I don't understand. You have a lawyer. You have contracts. Why do you not read them? Why do they not understand their job and what their rules are? I understand what my rules are. I have to pay my bills, and I can't take money that don't belong to me. And I don't think they should. So read your rules. Read your contracts. Do what you're supposed to do, and you won't get sued.
Anyone else, non-agenda items?
My name's Eddie Cox. I live in 1802 Bolton Ridge Mountain. And thank all the road commission paid, was going to pay it back. And I think when the virus was pretty bad, they had enough sense to stay home not to catch it. And I think some people keep relying on it all the time, but they won't try to let good people try to sit it down and pay it back and keep their mouth shut about trying to sue. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on non-agenda items? We'll move down now. Any comments regarding agenda items? I see none. Item 3, nominations, appointments for our constable. We've had this opening out for a couple of weeks, or maybe longer, I guess, and we have yet to have any name come forward to show any interest in it. So we'll leave that open for a second. If there's anyone in here that wants to step up, you do have that opportunity to do so. Very good. Move down to item 4, Calendar Rules Committee Report. Chairman Thomas Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have item 4A, which is the approval of the consent calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 4B is the approval of the regular calendar items. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Chairman Doty. Item 5, items to be removed from the consent calendar. We have none. The approval of the consent calendar.
Motion approved.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item 7, Finance Committee. The Vice Chairman, Thomas Doty.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have item 7A, which is Resolution 2434, a resolution requesting the 114th session of the Tennessee General Assembly to allocate one half of the real estate transfer tax to the county where the tax was collected on a recurring basis. I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? I spoke to motion.
Twelve yeas, one nays.
Motion passes.
Item 7B is the agreement for professional services between Hamlin County Third Judicial District Recovery Court and Health Connect America. And I put that in form of a motion.
Motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? See no discussion. Let's vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 7C is approval of the five-year contract with Axiom Enterprises for the tasers for our sheriff's department. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion? Let's vote the motion.
Wait a minute.
Oh, excuse me. Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. What happens to the old tasers? What happens to the old tasers?
We keep them.
Oh. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Excuse me, Bob. Sometimes if we've got something still in good shape, we will get credit for them if we turn on it.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions or comments? Vote the motion.
Thirteen yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes.
Item 7D is Cherokee Park Campground Regulations and Fee Changes. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a motion.
Everybody lost connection.
Uh-oh. Something isn't right.
Where's this just not running?
Everyone of them are dead.
Glitch in the matrix here. Bear with us.
April's gone, and what happened?
We'll blame it on her.
Call and tell her.
Don't do sweet little April that way. That kid's a good kid.
Bobby, wouldn't it be a lot faster if we just built yes and no than using all these?
It's just easier for us.
Just easier for you? Job security?
No, it's just, it keeps a good record of the votes.
Keeps an excellent record.
I lost it completely.
It must be good.
Yeah. Must be the server.
We got two more over here.
I'll level them down. I'll level them down.
I think we need to know yes and no.
Be easier right now.
It says it's trying to connect. It stopped.
Mine don't want to do that. Oh, praise God.
It was searching, but now it stopped.
Okay. We're going to move ahead. We'll just have to vote these off the board. So as we stand right now on the Cherokee Park Campground Regulations and Fee Changes, we have a motion from Mr. Doty. We're looking for a second.
Second.
We have a second for Mr. Harville. Any questions or comments?
Question.
Yes, Mr. Neesman.
While we've got David here, I've got a couple of questions I'd like to ask him. First of all, people that sat there long time, long term, I understand we've just got a few that's going to let, stay out there till they leave us. How many of those people, how many campers are there?
We got about nine.
Nine? How many you got long-term camping? Everybody in long-term camping?
Well, we got some that leave them there, but don't stay in them full-time. I'd have to get back and over the number on that. What about 30?
About 17, I think.
You got 17 long-term? And nine still are, and they're going to be there till 2027? Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Of those that's left, where their site was at, have y'all turned that into, or you turned that into some other kind of camping now?
Well, yeah, in the back, we're going to let them lay some pads down.
Can you use any of the material that they had left, like their decks or their awnings over there?
In some cases, yeah. In some cases, they have boards, and they rot, and everything else. We just think that's turning down burning.
Okay, that's one thing. Next, now, are y'all, are y'all not fixing places out there on out from those long-term campers for people to camp in?
You like tent camping?
I guess that tent camping?
Yes, sir.
Does that flood?
Not really, no.
Not really? It doesn't have lake excess, does it?
Yeah.
It does? It's on the left-hand side of the road. What's that on the right-hand side of that road going out there? Is that campers?
Yeah.
Nothing self-contained. Next question. Has anybody at the park looked about getting a septic system put in there through the city? Have you come up with anything?
We applied for a grant for a year before last, and the estimated cost on it was around $600,000.
Okay, that's the hook end of the city sewer, right? Which is right out, right out the road there.
It's, there are pump stations sits on part property.
Well, they need to pay us back, don't they? I was just wondering if, I didn't know what it costs, but I go across the bridge all the time, and I see all those campers over there. And they're flooded. They get like $6,000 or $7,000 to camp, to put their campers out there. And if we're going to use this park to make money, we should be doing the same thing. By following, by having. I think you're going to go in and do the electrical, the 30 amp, or the 50 outbreakers on all these others?
From 30 to 50.
And water? And water?
I don't think so.
Huh?
No, we're just going to do pads and electric.
And a lot, okay.
We done, we done it water-wise about four years ago. We done, we done the water line, so that should be good.
What did you come up with on the grants on that sewer?
We didn't get it.
Didn't get it.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Ms. Howell?
Yes, sir, thank you. So somebody's been out there in a camper for nine years?
Eleven.
Okay.
I haven't used one.
My goodness, so people can live in campers for a long time. Okay? The other thing is, if you don't have the sewer, so what happens?
We got to have station.
Yes, sir, so they have to do it.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, sir. Okay, thank you. Another thing I noticed in this is, my goodness, you have quiet time. So how does that happen? Whoa, 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 whoa. So you call the...
No, they, they do. If it's a lot of calm, then that's when we say.
Okay. Can they be evicted if they... Let's all hang on to that thought. Okay.
There's no one ever been evicted for that.
Yeah.
Well, I'd say the want to live there is pretty strong, too. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. No other comments? Let's, we'll have to do this off the board. Adam Clark?
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
No.
Edna Green?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
11 to 2. Motion passes.
We'll move now to the budget amendments. 7A1, which is Fund 101 for the Hamlin County Sheriff's Department, jail and courtroom security for $9,013.51. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
Mr. Bell, second. Do we have any questions? Yes, Ms. Howell?
Thank you, sir. This is for the upcoming or for the now? Jail? The current? Okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay, anyone else? Any questions? Let's vote the motion.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
13, 0. Motion passes.
We have item 7E2, Fund 101 for the property assessor's office in the amount of $4,521.32. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Mr. Harville? Any questions?
Question.
Yes, Mr. Neesman.
Is this for the, for them to evaluate our property? With Keith Haley?
It shows for data processing equipment.
Huh?
It shows for data processing equipment.
Process equipment.
Data processing equipment.
Computers.
Computers.
Technology.
But it does say for field appraisers.
Yeah, it's, Bobby, here.
I think it's actually iPads that they'll be able to take with them to be able to pull it up and see the property and do it there.
Do they have, do they hire many people to help with that? I have no idea.
Any extras?
I don't think they do, sir. I think what, they take care of most all this in-house. I can check with the assessor tomorrow to find out for sure.
Next question. Does the state still tell us how much it's going to be, what the rate's going to be?
Absolutely. This is a state mandate reappraisal that occurs every five years, and it is the state's evaluation. We do the legwork, and the state sends us that and gives us the certified tax rate.
Anyone else have a question? We'll vote the motion.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Motion passes.
We have item 7E3, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, for $11,496.97. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Horner. Do we have any questions? Let's vote the motion.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
13, 0. Motion passes.
Item 7E4, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department, for $9,500. And I put that in form of a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Richardson. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
First question. I'm assuming did the salary start in '23? I noticed that by what I'd gotten earlier that it was hourly to start with, so when did the salary rate start for this position?
When did we change the salary?
Yes, sir. Please, sir.
That's what we're, that's what we're talking about now.
So it's been hourly up till now? Am I understanding you correctly?
Yes. But in order to save money...
Hold on, hold on. There was, this was actually adjusted earlier this year. It gets all convoluted. This was a decision made by an elected official with an employee working under him. This did not change anything. It moved money within the budget, within their budget. He was changed from an hourly employee to a salaried employee. I don't actually know the specific date.
I went from hourly to salary. I think August 1st.
August 1st.
There you go.
I can go back on timesheets and find out if you can read.
That was the question. I was curious.
It hasn't been that long, Miss Green.
Okay.
Couple of months.
Okay. Quick question. So when we put this into place, chief, well, I'm not going to say chief Ellis, but anyone that holds that position, just so I'm clear, will be salaried at that point?
First thing you need to understand that sheriff has the ability to designate how his employees are paid or designated. It would be up to the elected official in that department to do so. So no, ma'am, it may not be a salaried employee the next time. It may, could be an hourly. Can't determine that.
Okay. And what is that governed by? The private act, out of curiosity?
By being elected as high sheriff of Hamlin County.
So there's no, what I'm asking is, is there anything that specifies that, sir? Let me give you an example, sir, and clarify my question. Like the road commission is governed... Like the road commission is governed under a private act. We are governed under a different act. So is there anything that governs that?
Yes, ma'am, there is a Tennessee code annotated for that. And I'll have to find that for you. I don't have it in front of me. I may find it here in just a moment.
Okay. Well, we have our county attorney with us if that would help, Mr. Mayor.
Don't know the answer to that, Miss Green.
I don't have that private, or that TCA code in front of me. I'm sorry.
Okay, would you please send it to me tomorrow then, sir?
I'm not going to promise, but I'll get it to you.
I would appreciate that, sir. Thank you for the explanation, sir.
Mr. Green, do you understand that this will save the county money?
I'm not quite sure of that. That's why I was asking the question, to be brutally honest with you, sir. I'm, as one of my neighbors used to tell me, sheriff, I'm from Missouri. I like to see what I'm talking about, sir.
You want me to explain to you, Miss Green?
Well, if you want to, it would be greatly appreciated, sir.
Can you give your microphone, Bobby?
Yes, so that we can all hear.
Go up there on a podium or something.
Yes.
That will work. Thank you, sir.
Here's the situation. When I come on board as chief deputy, I was hourly. I was making X amount of dollars per hour. Anything over 80 hours of pay period, I got overtime. Now, if you want to calculate my hours, I go 10:08 in service at a certain time in the morning. I go 10:07 out of service whenever I get off.
Okay.
Do the math.
Okay, quick question. When you say it's based on 80 hours, I'm assuming we're talking 40 a week, two-week periods, sir?
Basically, yes.
Thank you for the clarification, darling.
I put it in simple terms so you'll understand.
Well, please do.
Now then, anything over 80 hours, I would get time and a half.
Okay.
Then I would get paid, and on my paycheck, it would have regular hours, overtime hours. The sheriff and I agreed that it would be in the county's best interest for me to come off of hourly time and go on salary time. Are you with me?
So far, yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
This was proposed to compensate for the loss of overtime. I was offered a $10,000 a year increase in my base pay. I do not get overtime now. I work the same amount of hours. I come in when needed. I do what needs to be done, but I don't get paid any extra for it. Are we clear?
That was my question. Both my children are salaried, and that's why I wanted to understand it.
That's my question. Are we clear?
Well, to the best of my ability at this point, yes, sir. But thank you for the explanation, sir.
You're welcome. Can we put this issue to bed?
Thank you, Park.
I said, can we put this issue to bed?
Well, unless I think of another question, darling.
Well, it's a question. Can you answer it?
Not at this point, I can't, sir.
Okay.
But thank you. I appreciate it. I appreciate the explanation, sir.
Do we have any other comments or questions? Okay, let's vote to motion.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Yes.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Edna Green?
No.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Twelve one. Motion passes.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Doty. Item eight, Public Services Committee, Chairman Mike Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 8A, approval of the 2024 Hamlin County road list. And I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, Mr. Doty. Any questions?
Question. Mike, how many roads do you take off?
One.
Huh?
One from last year, Grigsby.
Couple of years ago.
Well, this, this period is one, one road.
Okay.
We still have 407 miles and change left.
So you lost a mile, didn't you?
Plus six tenths, yes.
Quick question, sir.
Six tenths.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you, Wayne. Go ahead.
What?
Did I interrupt you?
I don't reckon.
Okay.
I wasn't listening.
Quick question.
I wasn't listening over that one.
Okay. One of the road commissioners was talking, was telling me they thought this was the road that the agreement was that we would have the gasoline tax for so many years. Is this the same road that that agreement was made on and yet they filed bankruptcy? Well, what I was told was they filed bankruptcy and therefore there was no gasoline tax that had come forward. Is this the same road, is my question?
Grigsby Road is the same road, but I don't know any of the other particulars about bankruptcy or payments and kind or anything like that.
Bankruptcy on that road, was he?
That's what I was told. That's the reason I asked. And I hadn't had any chance to call, ma'am. But thank you. I cleared it. Thank you, ma'am.
Do we have any other questions? Okay, let's vote to motion.
Bobby Hahn?
Yes.
Mike Reed?
Good.
Debbie Ahern?
Yes.
Tim Horner?
Yes.
Joe Huntsman?
Yes.
Mike Richardson?
Yes.
Peggy Howe?
Yes.
Thomas Doty?
Yes.
Danny Bell?
Yes.
Stan Harville?
Yes.
Wayne Neesmith?
Yes.
Edna Green?
Yes.
Kyle Walker?
Yes.
Thirteen oh. Motion passes.
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
I don't know everyone's bankruptcy.
All the business we have for this evening, couple of announcements. Moving into the year 2025, we've got a lot of new items coming up, some old business to wrap up. We'll start at January 13th on a Monday for a committee meeting. And then we'll come back January 23rd, 2025, on Thursday for a regular Hamlin County Commission meeting. Do any of our commissioners, officials have anything they'd like to drop in real quick? I wish everyone a very merry and safe Christmas. Enjoy your family, food, fun, the festivities. Again, keep Rodney long in your prayers as we go into this season.
Go balls.
We stand adjourned.
We've got a game tonight.